Parents, fathers, daughters. This is the first meeting of the National League League Board of Elections. We are not going to talk about this. We will talk about this. We will talk about this. We will talk about this. So, we are not going to talk about this. We are not going to talk about this. We are not going to talk about this. This is the board of election supervisor. We are not going to talk about this. So, this is the board of election supervisor. This is the... We are not going to talk about this. We are not going to talk about this. Arizona, Joe Rock Point and some other schools over there. We are not going to talk about this. 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 25 CFR federal law will not allow... I think you were there, Mr. Rogers. So, we are not going to talk about this. We are not going to talk about this. We are not going to talk about this. Research, PhD, you are not going to talk about this. We 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 are not going to talk about this. This is Mr. Matthew Aldo Maristos. We are not going to talk about this. 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 Over these people that have PhDs. We are not going to talk about this. We are not going to talk about this. We are not going to talk about this. So, we are not going to talk about this. 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 PhD, PhD. We are not going to talk about this. 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 So, again, she has planned for A. I have to be careful. We don't have Mathew, so... One example. You have a board of election supervisor. I don't know. You have one board member. One board member. I'm not going to talk about this. We are not going to talk about this. We are not going to talk about this. We are not going to talk about this. She has a school board. School board, it's not easy. We are not going to talk about this. They don't want to run for school board. She resolution that they should leave. We are not going to talk about this. We are not going to talk about this. We are not going to talk about this. She, the board of election supervisor, told her. We are not going to talk about this. That whole thing is open for the public. We are not going to talk about this. So, we are not going to talk about this. Chapter, I don't know. It's called chapter official. She is not going to talk about this. We are not going to talk about this.
Thank you for making your preference. Thanks, Dan. Next would be Crystal.
How do you follow that? Yeah, she, Crystal Martinez, Tommy. She has talked about this. She has talked about this. She has talked about this. I'm from Shiprock. And I am the principal at Zephon Dithy Community Grant School. I've been there for about 14 years since it started as a grant school. I have two students, two boys that go to school there. And they are doing very wonderful at that school. Professional, advanced, have excellent teachers. And I also want to say that I have a very supportive school board. At our school, we have what we call Grow Your Own. I started out as an education assistant. And because of the things that our school board has put in place, the advocating that they do on behalf of our students, even our staff. And one thing we're always leaving out are the parents. You know, they are always out there advocating for the parents as well. And with our Grow Your Own, like I was saying, going from an assistant, teacher's assistant, I've gone up as a teacher itself. And then I've gone into math coaching. And with the support of the school, the school board and the staff, now I'm a principal at Zephon Dithy School. And because of that, you know, that something at least can happen if I'm a Naval Nation. Within the schools, grow your own, have your own staff, step up into those positions because we're losing a lot of our teachers. We're losing a lot of that valuable information that could go to our students and pushing our students to be their best. And with that, we educate our students at Zephon Dithy School to be self-sufficient and self-driven learners. And in order to do that, what we do at Zephon Dithy, we get a new school board member. Our school board members, they lend a hand, they educate them, they tell them about their roles and responsibilities. Every school is different, the vision, the mission, the purpose. The staff is different. So, when you start combining schools and you have these school boards overseeing these schools, it's hard to keep track of which ones are functioning the way they should, which ones do we need to be focusing on when your school board that is representing communities needs to focus just on your school within the area that it serves the students. And after finding out more, and that's what we need to do more of, is analyzing what kind of impact are these plans going to have on our school, our students, the parents. And when you become a school board member traveling, we have one that represents Shiprock and the Nanzad area. And you think about them traveling to so many different board meetings in a month. That's a lot of wear and tear, like you were saying. Cost efficient is not there. So, my preference is actually 4A as my first preference. And then Plan 1 would be my second choice. In addition to that, we also have students that come from Shiprock. Surprisingly, they went to Zephon Dithy School to stay in the dorms. We have approximately eight students. Parents taking them back and forth to come to our school and be educated by our staff. So, just with that, combining the schools, especially on Plan 6, is very not cost efficient. And I don't think it's going to be effective if you're really looking into the function of the school and how our students are progressing and performing. So, my recommendation is look more, deeper into it. Look at the finances, how is it going to impact? What are the pros and cons before making a drastic change such as combining the schools that you have?
Thank you, Crystal. Next, Lisa, again. I know that it should be a school board member. So, I can see how you can get political about it. But please try and stick with the subject of the re-portionment plan. Thank you.
Oh, can you hear me now? Okay, I'm registered at the border with the Zephon Dithy chapter. And she doesn't know the show. But she is... First and foremost, I want to say that I don't support the, you know, combining of the schools. Just as everyone has said, you know, why pick something that isn't broken? And I think that, you know, all the plans, there's six plans. And it's just so confusing, confusing to present so many plans. And, you know, there's just very little changes maybe here and there. And it's hard to differentiate between the plans. And I also have to say that, you know, if you look at the plans and the combining of the schools, that it doesn't make sense, you know, because some of the chapters are so far apart. And each community, I believe, is unique to their own school. And these school board members, they know their community. They know the people there. They know the needs of their community and the needs of the school. And I really like what the school board is doing, you know, with their school board. And focusing mainly on the children. And, you know, that has a big impact on student testing, you know, and as far as our kids becoming, you know, leaders later on in life. And also, I don't think it's going to be effective. And I think that with only one board member overseeing so many schools, it's going to have a big impact on the functions of the school, you know, special board meetings, you know, all these things. The schools all have their own different issues that arise. Some are critical, you know. I mean, it's going to be hard. I don't see how it would work. And it's good to know that there's also no impact on funding. So, you know, that's going to be an issue here, the funding part of it. And then I also like to bring up the issue of why this is being considered, what problems have been identified out in the communities and the school boards to make some of these drastic changes, you know, identify those problems, and then you go and resolve them. But I haven't heard, you know, anything on what the problems are at this point. And then, and to help, you know, kind of in that area, I think that maybe the election office needs to reconsider or even look at the background checks. You know, all the school board members are required to have a lifetime background check. And I think that has a big impact on vacancies as far as the board. Maybe they need to reconsider that in legislation and maybe go back and see five years like they do with all the other positions, elected positions in the Naval Nation. And also to remove the term limits, you know. Some communities are small. And I think they need to remove the term limits on some of these boards. And, you know, some of the boards, they are passionate about what they do. You know, they're passionate about their kids and their community. And, you know, I think a lot of that is overlooked. And it just comes to, oh, we just need to do this or to do that. And they make changes like that, but they don't go to the board meetings to see the passion for some of the boards have for the community and for their kids because they have their own kids there, they have their grandkids there. You know, and that's how I feel about that. And also, I like to say also that in all of these things, all of the plans, that the election laws are followed. And just to make sure they're in compliance with the election laws. And I think Plan 6 is pretty radical. I'm going to reiterate what you said, it's radical. So, I would not support that. And I would support Plan 4A as my first. And 1 as an alternate, but I think Plan 4A is pretty close to what we have now. And in closing, I would like to say that, you know, everyone that has made their comments here, I really hope they consider when this goes to be more effective that it's reported and that our comments do matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Repportionment, yeah. It's a periodic thing. So, with the Naval Nation Council, so, yeah. 1975, I don't think I'm allowed to use the re-portionment council every 10 years. The Adjo Davi. With school board, hey, yeah. 2003, yeah, that is a whole change. And to do re-portionment every four years. So, that's the track that the Naval Nation is on. So, and as time goes, things do change. Populations change, their population shifts, school enrollment, plus two ways and so forth. So, you didn't mention, oh, re-portionment. So, it's just a, when it comes to re-portionment, basically, what it does is to create a plan that has the best representation, proper representation for students and so forth, for people. So, that's what re-portionment is really about. Next is Hazel.
Hazel, please. I wish to thank all the people who are here. We appreciate the Plan 4A. We are grateful. 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 We are grateful.
Thank you. Marie, Marie Rose.
Okay, I may call you.
Yeah, hey, Marie Rose. So, I don't know. My dish is in the chair. So, I'm sorry. She is... The food is in the water. I don't know. I don't know. I had some groceries to take care of, so I didn't make it there. So, I'd like to... Yeah. She, yeah, Plan Number 4, Number 1, she says, no, support, no, I can't. Although, keep it to just the re-portionment plan. I mean, ah, so, it's... There's only about 13. Although, I'm trying to... But the only person, yeah, the staff, they're worried because the board combined, yeah, also, some of us are going to be looking for new jobs. That's... So, we are... Ah, so, it's... Just keep it to the re-portionment plan. That's all it is, this district, you know, board members. I mean, what if the schools were combined? Or some of my employees, the schools that are running, they have employees there, will they be displaced? Will they not have jobs anymore? So, employees, I just... She, yeah, ah, so, I don't know. So, I don't know. She, please, I don't know. Although, 60 days, 60 days, common period. No, for 60 days, starting last month, on test case. From March 26th, we are... And the public hearing, public hearing, we are... But the last week, she... It's... So, I don't know. So, we had to run around to try to find a place where we have the time to attend a public hearing. Although, board members, I don't know. I noticed that some of the schools have more board members now if they're combined, combined, you know. Some schools, like, for example, I was looking at the charts, and Rock Point will increase from five to six board members. The... Although, I don't know. I don't know. And one of the other things also, before I forget, is that maps. Maps, hold on, I'm trying to... I'm a very visual person. If I look at the CBT, you know, I go back and forth, back and forth between each one of these plans and trying to figure it out. And I retype just my board. She... I can see what was going on with that big packet. I couldn't figure it out for a while. But I like to see, I like to see a map. And with all the schools that are combined, they... I think it's... So, let's... I think... Beat up. So, like, how? That's... She, like I said, I'm a very visual person. I don't know. So, if it's not drawn out, sometimes I look at mistakes too. And so, but... She, please, we're Plan 4A and Number 1. It's... And it's true that, well, our schools... And I think background information is really important also. What might happen is also important because the schools need to combine. How... I don't know. Every year, but if they're combined, that's it. I want, just like, for... I don't know. I want finance office, though. One business office, one human resource office, one... The... For each school, that's it. Although, those are some of the questions that need to be asked. So, I don't know. She, I don't know.
Thank you, Marie. Next would be Mr. Whitty.
Yeah, hey. Let me... I don't know. 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 They don't know. They don't know. I 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 don't know. She, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. She, yeah, I don't know. 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 Resolutions are... I don't know. 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 Board members. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. She, I don't know. 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 I don't know.
Ekoh, eh, ba, ah, ko, no, sun, aji, eh, ba, na, oh, ya, eh, di, de, ko, do, board, di, de, idi. La, ji, ni, jen, ga, de, do, no, sun, eh, aji, na, bo, so, eh, di, di, ti, oh, ni. Aru, ko, board of education, da, sa, da, former, former, alla, di, jen, de, na, ta, ni, eh, be, hot, oh, ch, eh, koh, eh, hota, eh, yaha, kudo, ah, shi, shi, alla, di, eh, yaha, kha, aji, eh. Ekoh, eh, de, hota, eh, koi, shi, ne, de, shi, be, zan, da, oh, kha, yaha, di, has, eh.
Uh, let's be, will say calmly, I, I've tried to calm up here for you guys. Uh, I, 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 I'm so, I'm so loaded, eh, um, but, uh. Ah, need, the, ne, kesh, eh, yah, ti, yah, yah, vani. And when you look at numbers, do, yah, they started tracking, um, language spoken as part of the long form, census form, beginning in nineteen ninety, ah, ah. Ado, ado, be, de, ah, me, Jesus, the, the, the different types of languages that are spoken, uh, that's reported to the census. In nineteen ninety, ah, da, be, de, ah, do. Novel spoken was that twenty first ranked spoken language in the nation. It was the twenty first. Auto, because of immigration and so forth, eh, di, yah, yah, vani, do. So, I don't know what the, what the ranking is for novel spoken language, uh, for two thousand, two thousand ten. However, the percentage of spoken novel language, again, yah, vani, per, per novel population. I, I remember, the, I think it was, the, uh, twenty, uh, tw- two thousand, it was like, at seventy four percent. Auto, when two thousand, uh, ten came up, it was in the high sixties, so, yah, vani, ah, ni, but, eh. But anyways, uh, uh, given, given, the, uh, nichet, I'm just putting everybody in my age group, all of you. Much are younger than me, few are probably, I don't think, I don't know if anybody is older than me here. Uh, so, then, the, uh, probably, I'm gonna put myself as the oldest person in here. Uh, but still, we are bilingual. Ah, chichbe, ye, tki, foga, most of us, especially those of you that are in education, you are bilingual. Ah, chichbe, yatki. And to me, that gives it the greatest strength that you can have, is that you can walk in two different worlds and be able to express yourself. Our novel leadership is about that. They go to the roundhouse, they're not gonna be speaking novel over there. You're gonna have to convince those other leaders in English, what you, what you're striving for. Nichet, ah, na, na, eh, with Eastern Novel Land Commission. We are going to try and get back the lands that originally we owned. Keha, he, zan, le, ki, hindari, ah, no, ah, they, bena, sleep, only. That is the mission of our Eastern Novel Land Commission. So, what, eh, yah, be, da, ta, eh, ita, da, chichut, sa, be, yatki, oh, so, please, uh, anyway, that's, uh, one, 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 one thought as well, too. So, but, eh, you know, I admire that, I admire, uh, so, let, can only, can not, I'm sure you can speak, uh, English for me, but. Yeah, they get five quarters to steal somehow. Because you are certified, eh, to graduate on and on, but anyways, it is a, it is a, it is a, a, a real critical issue. So, the mission, part of our mission, as, as novel people, should, should be to make sure that we do preserve our language. Eh, be, idi, da, har, oni, sa, da, bene, da. So, I believe in all that, but I don't speak it, because my job, it doesn't relate to that, yah. Eh, na, ba, yas, tki, da, but when somebody brings it out as a subject, you know, it gets quite interesting to talk about, so. Since you're all in education, I thought I'd bring that back up, so. Uh, hakushik, yeah, um, uh, Kado?
Yeah, eh. Hey, it's Asha, Joe. All done, this, Ashi, man. Four, eh, is, yah, eh. Uh, and, Ashi, me. To, uh, say, eh, three, da, da, say, oh, you, kushi, na, has, kha. Four, eh, de, da, uh, eh, joke, uh, la, uh, uh, one, ah, shagi, eh, four. Eh, ah, eh, kado, eh, la, eh, three, eh, go, make, uh, a core, ten, uh, take care of the business. We have four, all healthy board, board members, we're doing a good job. Um, I'm just concerned about all these plans that were made. Aji, gah, de, do, ha, pato, des, kadi, do, ba, yas, tki. The queen, na, ta, ni, be, kane, na, eh, two board members, be, eh, de. Ah, de, hun, ti, ah, na, has, idi, oh, ki, de, hun, idi, oh, be, kha, he, si, ki, be, spe, oh, zan, once, eh. Oh, da, eh, na, so, ste, ne, you know, ah, do, kha, ho, idi, da. That's my one question here. Yako, oh, idi, ah, do. Take, for example, experience, the number of years that, uh, in, uh, different schools. Eh, oh, she, kada, eh, 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 idi, do, me. Ah, is, eh, di, he, she, kha, de, yah, yada, eh, eh. But, number one is, is, eh, like, kids. Kids, you know, eh, eh, yaha, hat, ni, eh. I, I wanna correct myself. Students, children, we love children. We had to be a board member to do that. If you're in education, you're going to school, like, university, and the, eh, the professor will say to you. Do you like students? Do you, eh, what, do you like to be around them? If you're not, if you don't like being there, let out, do something else, joke, uh, eh, eh. Okay, I think that's what, uh, I wanna bring up, that four, eh, is an ideal plan. And, uh, a lot of you, they're wrong, they're hip, and, uh, that's true, you got my support, thank you.
Uh, back to the, uh, when there are options, yeah, there are six plans, remember, there's eight. There, there are actually eight plans, uh, four, you know, five, it's two each, but anyways, uh, uh, the main thing about, from, when it comes to reportionment, bro. It's, uh, it's trying to come up with as many different options. So, as, as you prepare more options, there's a great deal of opportunity to learn from, from what, uh, some of these options will be. Uh, auto, eh, at these public hearings, even just as we're hearing today, eh, you're preferring certain ones, and that's all we need to hear, is that which ones are you preferring? So, that, eh, I don't, that, so, yeah. Uh, William Foster, William?
Yeah, eh, bena, shen, ne, uh, she, yah, we, fa, so, gen, is, eh. Aru, ak, kro, is, yah, ho, ah, de, kha, eh, ho, ho, na, ni, be, yah, wo, sh, aru, kandjida, ni, eh, aji, shin, kara, has, na, do, na, you. Eh, eh, kudre, ne, shara, aji, aji, se, she, kha, eh, aji, yaha, ni, eh. Aru, ak, eh, it, kha, do, ne, sh, po, or, in, school, ho, li, geh, eh. Akoh, ko, oh, ha, you, eh, yah, eh, kudo, de, ne, be, ta, it, kha. It, ah, kudo, cha, kha, ha, kha, ha, na, ta, ni, da, eh, ta, eh, le, sa, ha, sand, na, ta, ni, da, eh, ben, shal, di, da, li, yah, da, ro, so, tki. Richard, eh, eh, la, sh, chari, sa, na, ho, na, eh. Eh, na, sh, kudi, eh, sh, ke, eh, sh, no, hashin, zah, ho, jij. Ekoh, she, yah, ne, katta, ni, na, nza, eh, de, ke, eh, sh, eh, kudre, ta, na, ho, be, sa, la, nshno, hashin, zah, sh, na, ho, jij. Astan, le, aru, sh, 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 benak, es, ne, eh, eh, be, ke, eh, sh, eh, sh, eh, 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 ne, nza, de, ke, eh, 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 aru, eh. Eh, da, shi, sh, la, di, eh, sh, na, kha, aru, hota, aja, chen, ho, na, aru, eh, ki, katta, uh, stha, kha, she, kero, kha, eh, ke. Ekoh, she, yah, eh, di, uh, school, da, retire, is, da, sh, po, sh, yeh, di, school. Aru, eh, yah, eh, di, zah, oh, yah, chen, bena, sh, nish. Ah, ne, ke, two, property. Hota, eh, chen, bena, sh, nish, aru, special, eh, da, eh, 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 akoh, I know exactly what each child goes through, eh, hota, eh, ba, hot, sun. Eh, zah, eh, ki, kha, eh, na, ni, eh, is, sa, sh, eh, koi, eh, hota, eh, di, kha. Aru, sh, ha, so, sl, le, ni, na, nza, cha, kha, on, ah, sta, eh, sh, oh, na, eh, da, kha, eh, kido, ne, zela, hota, di, eh, aru. School board member, di, eh, sh, oh, ni, eh, na, eh, ni, akoh, di, first term, sh, eh. Akoh, eh, yah, eh, sh, yat, eh, nishoni, eh, eh, hota, eh, la, school board, nash, nish. Do, no, she, ne, ba, la, hein, eh, da, lansan, aru, zela, hota, di, oh, kha, eh. Zula, kui, shi, ta, ta, sh, la, she, yah, eh, yah, eh, da, noh, hota, eh, da, ni, eh. Ko, she, la, ni, kha, da, kha, she, hota, eh, da, hota, shi, eh, da, ni, eh, 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 eh. Ato, ne, eh, sh, ten, ki, eh, yadi, kudo, chi, ni. Na, eh, she, yeh, ha, si, si, ne, do, this, eh, noh, eh, si, nish, no, ndab, ni, kha, eh, ne, eh, bena, kesh, da, na, eh. So, eh, eh, chi, eh, eh, la, ho, aru, ki, le, chi, eh, yah, eh, ba, sh, chi, eh, ho, he, li, eh, eh, ta, sh, chi, masan. Uh, ta, chi, eh, eh, ta, sh, chi, eh, ho, he, li, eh, ta, sh, nala, eh, eh, hota, eh, ne, sh, eh. Ekoh, di, kha, plan, four, eh, ho, li, geh, eh, ashon, ah, aru, chen, bena, ta, sh, nish, or, la, eh, aji. Aru, plan, zke, do, oh, no, ne, la, eh, la, sh, kha, on, ah, ri, oh, na, don, na, eh, eh, shi, van, na, na, shi, sh, eh, oh, ni, he, na, ha, eh, do. So, eh, lo, sh, yat, eh, aru, aru, plan, four, eh, gi, sh, yat, eh, aru, koi, eh, kha, kha, sa, tse, eh, nishoni, eh, ah, kha, eh, ha, za, di, di, sa, aru, sh, sa, do, sh, eh, sh, nis, oh. Aru, aru, eh, ha, ra, ta, eh, di, eh, sh, di, eh, yah, eh, si, eh, be, kha, da, oh, de, di, cha, kha, ni, da, ho, je, eh, eh, aru, eh, eh, ah, sa, eh. De, zela, ah, koi, sh, po, cha, kha, koi, na, sh, ta, ko, di, zela, eh, koi, ha, ra, pi, ha, la, ne, da, has, kha, la. Ekoh, di, kha, school board member, ni, le, ni, eh, eh, koi, kha, eh, ah. Ah, je, oh, masan, ba, ni, le, ni, eh, eh, kha, kha, ho, na, eh. She, di, chay, sh, eh, aru, sh, sh, kha, kha, da, kha, sh, po, sh, yeh, di, school. Zola, kha, 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 sh, po, high school. Zola, kha, kha, na, da, kha, aru, uh, Kirkland Central. Hota, eh, ne, sh, di, eh, koi, eh, eh, kha, kha, hota, sh, be, sa, ho, aji, aru, di, public meeting. Kho, oh, eh, ah, she, do, ha, de, kha, ho, das, da, sh, sh, na, nish, sh, di, kha, da, eh, je, sh, na, ho, sh, sh, ah, sh, sh, na, nish, nsa, eh, na, eh. And, eh, school board members, has, sh, oh, hot, eh, public meeting, go, sh, eh, yas, sh, noh. Hot, public meeting, nes, da, ha, ne, ta, di, kha, eh, di, eh, on, new, paper, oh, da, eh, kha. Eh, 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 public, public meeting, ha, ilan, aru, ho, aru, ho, yah, noh, hota, di, kha, ha, ne, ha, sh, eh, yah, ho. Kono, che, ho, da, di, di, tski, oh, aji, da, eh, be, ni, yadi, kha, breed portion, eh, ha, ni, ni, he, da, eh, kha, eh. Sh, yat, eh, de, eh, di, de, ko, di, no, zul, da, yeh, ki, ahead of time, aru, kui, ch, eh, hota, eh, kha, ha, na, eh, 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 kha, sh, nish, oh. De, newspaper, eh, sh, eh, sh, kha, oh, aru, news, oh, sh, eh, aru, la, eh, ke, eh, eh, aji, do, nshuno, zne, ha, zne, aru, eh, rasi, kha, na, sh, ta, oh, da. Aru, kha, na, kha, na, kha, eh, eh, na, eh, aru, hota, so, sh, eh, eh, koi, kha, eh, slivi, oh, ni, ni, eh, sah. Oh, ni, han, ah, hot, eh, da, sh, lo, ha, eh, sh, kha, eh, sh, ch, oh, di. Al, eh, eh, ch, oh, da, eh, aji, di, kha, da, eh, kha, ke, noh, da, sh, eh, di, eh, eh, hot, eh, da, I, I agree with you. Ni, eh, di, na, ta, ni, noh, hashin, zah, ho, jij, eh, koi, eh, hota, eh, eh, ah, man, sun. Aru, ke, eh, school board, aru, ta, so, ta, klo, eh, eh, bar, sh, nish, ni, koi, eh, kha, ne, ba, kha, eh, ne, kha, kha, na, eh, le, oh. Eh, yah, eh, sh, noh, koi, eh, eh, na, sh, eh, do. Oh, hota, eh, ne, sh, eh, do, eh, kha, kha, eh, he, za, di, eh, sh, eh, aha, ne, she, eh, do, ne, sh, eh, kha, da, aji, eh, de. Eh, kha, eh, you guys are on the right track, thank you very much.
All right, I guess, uh, Mr. Foster, uh, that was a real calm way of putting things, so, that was good, I guess, appreciate that. Uh, next up is, uh, Ms. Henderson. Uh, public notice, again, um, uh, tal, eh, novel, eh, be, eh, comment, the last Thursday's issue. Uh, my understanding, that's, uh, the only, uh, paper that was used to announce these public hearings.
Yeah, eh, bena, eh, na, da, eh. She, yah, di, na, koi, de, ne, sh, eh, aru, sh, ah, so, eh, eh, yah, eh, da, sh, eh, sh, na, sh, na, eh, aru, eh, she, eh, eh, da, sh, chi, do, kodi, ko, eh, da, sh, nala. Di, eh, yah, eh, ter, na, sti, ne, eh, ho, kha, ho, so, ni, ni, de, eh, po, se, ho, ni, eh, ki, eh, ah, ne, eh, si, sh, eh. Di, ah, de, eh, yah, high school board member, ah, ni, de, go, ta, eh, yah, eh, koi, ta, eh, eh, ho, sh, ah. Le, ta, uns, ah, eh, yah, di, ha, eh, la, eh, si, ha, ne, ta, oh, do, kha, la, eh, ne, eh, ah, eh, ha, eh, sus, kis, so, eh, yah, eh, da, sh, da. Public school, di, go, eh, aji, eh, kha, na, so, zan, eh, ki, eh, aji, eh, si, eh, eh, bo, ho, ah, do, sh, pa, oh, zan. Ekoh, di, di, ne, de, sa, be, yati, eh, eh, ni, ki. Ah, ni, hota, eh, sh, kha, do, di, kha, kha, be, yas, tki, eh, di, do, ba, ho, sun, mas, ni, de, kha, la, eh, ne, Oklahoma, aji, eh. Shum, eh, ki, eh, di, ah, de, kha, ta, ha, ni, sh, noh, na, kha, eh, za, ah, de, na, eh, bo, ho, ah, eh, it, kha, oh. Aru, kudje, eh, rap, eh, ho, try, eh, do, aji, za, bena, ho, ah. Nan, sa, kha, de, eh, ten, sh, masan, ucha, de, si, eh. Kha, it, kha, na, na, ah, eh, de, yah, eh, bena, sh, ni, ho, ah, eh, de, koi, ucha, na, eh. Aru, sh, masan, eh, ha, kosh, kosh, sh, po, sh, ni, eh, kona, eh, ten, ba, yas, tki, eh, eh, ten, do, be, di, sh, tki, eh. Aru, koi, na, sh, na, eh, koi, 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 de, na, eh, eh, da, eh, koi, ha, ishi, da, ne, eh, do, be, di, sh, tki, eh. Ekoh, ch, las, zeh, eh, le, eh, Oklahoma, na, kha, yeh, da, eh, sh, sah, eh, kha, na, eh, eh, sh, na, eh, eh, na, eh, eh, do, kodo, da, sh, eh, noh. Ne, kui, shi, hota, eh, yesh, eh, kha, da, has, di, aji, bena, eh, eh, ha, ish, do, na, eh, eh, bena, ho, eh, sh, eh, eh, one of the elders. Ekoh, eh, bena, ho, eh, 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 par, who I am, as a novel woman, yah, de, ne, star, sh, ni, beni, na, sh, za, bena, ho, eh, ah, kha, eh, eh, be, yas, tki. Ah, ni, ta, do, eh, yah, bena, kha, na, eh, ki, ba, it, kha, eh, de, eh, koi, na, de, sh, kedi, ki, kha, eh, la, beni, eh. Ah, akoh, sa, ho, zan, de, kha, da, ne, ni, he, eh, noh, koi, man, he, eh, kha, da, bena, eh, noh. Di, eh, hota, eh, di, the first option, kha, de, eh, si, son, he, eh, ha, kip. The way it is now, kado, de, kui, shi, hota, ba, ha, da, sa, zee, do, eh, eh, po, kha, eh, be, ni, eh, ba, ti, na, eh. Hash, da, kha, eh, sa, ho, zan, de, kha, de, kudja, oh, je, ne, kudja, oh, je, zela, zela, ne, eh, sah, das. Kha, da, ne, ni, he, eh, noh, ah, akoh, de, eh, eh, kha, eh, 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 that first one, the way is option, noh, eh, kha, eh, currently, it's like this. Make your packet, don't be, say, so, is, eh, why not? That's what should be in there. CFR, ha, no, ba, yati, court of federal regulations. Aru, eh, she, kha, eh, a, board members, eh, ki, hashin, a, kha, ha, na, do, a, eh, eh, description, eh, eh, di, kha, eh, do, eh, ha, si, eh, eh, sh, eh, kono, ni, na, has, kedi, eh. CFR, hota, eh, is, zo, aru, eh, be, keni, eh, hota, eh, na, da, zo, aru, ni, koi, kha, de, hota, eh, 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 ne, sh, eh, beni, na, ki, aru, na, ho, kha, ni, ki, ban, so, kis. Di, oh, he, eh, oh, kha, na, kha, de, be, ti, kha, ti, do, yah, da, eh, eh, ah, kedi, eh, ne, na, eh, oh, ko, ban, eh, kha. Ah, ma, do, eh, je, eh, eh, chay, na, eh, da, zeh, eh, eh, ho, na, eh, da, na, has, kha, ni, sh, kha, eh, yah, se, da, kis. Ah, ko, ah, ak, kudi, nich, eh, yo, eh, de, tki, eh, da, zeh, eh, ho, da, has, na, eh, eh, ah, ni, de, eh, de, he, za, he, eh, ne. Ah, ni, de, eh, eh, de, na, ba, eh, de, tki. Aru, eh, sh, kha, ha, one, kha, ho. Nich, school board meeting, da, eh, de, ho, da, zeh, di, aru, eh, da, zeh, han, da, ch, kha.